Good morning, Commissioners, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss, and welcome to the Thursday, March 6th, 2025, Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. I don't expect we'll go for the full day at all today, but we'll see how it goes because lots of things are going on in the world. So first, we occasionally go over the roundtable of the rolling agenda. I'm really hoping that I won't make month mistakes today, as has been my usual. So you'll see that the latest set is from yesterday or fifth. Have any of you, I haven't been, I haven't had a chance this week since I've been back to go over the rolling agenda. Have you all looked at it? Are there any particular things that? Oh, good grief, I didn't, oh, there's March, somehow I printed April before March, isn't that fun?
That's how they're.
They order on the agenda.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
It's not you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go back to March. And let's see. Oh, good, we'll have the library item in work session next week. I'm looking forward to learning more. I am, I'll just say disappointed, given that it's coming to a public meeting and that the mayors wanted to be on the journey that the offer to have one of the two of you present at their, at the monthly meeting next Monday was declined, so.
I don't think, I don't, no, I said, I said no to it just because I didn't think we were ready. I thought we needed.
I thought you were gonna do that.
Today. When it, when, when was that or is that meeting with the mayors? Was that last week or something?
Next Monday, the judge. I can't hear you, Grace. The seventeenth, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be out of the office.
Well, and we've got this on our work session for next Tuesday.
Uh huh, which is gonna have them feeling like we have ignored them. So just so you know, because the April agenda isn't gonna have room for it. So there you go, you're gonna have to arrange your own meeting.
I'll do that.
Which is easier said than done with that. Because they're all busy holding down other jobs, so. Then, oh, if I could go back to March, we are going through, on March 18th, we will have Ms. Angie's 2024 Annual Performance Review. We are using a new system this year, or starting this year, using an outside consultant with a new survey tool and establishing a process that's replicable year over year. And we're going to be using the resources for all three of our direct reports. So we're gonna be going, we already are, or I am with the consultant, going through a learning process in how to maximize the tool. And we're learning that there are some limitations. So, for example, we're used to having a goal-setting document with Ms. Angie. Well, the tool doesn't, has text limits, like a lot of electronic tools. Given, given the pacing of this year, we're just going to do appro, I do appropriate workarounds. Like, we'll just have some standalone documents. And then moving ahead, we'll, we'll look at having the tool expand, so. But, you know, full steam ahead we go.
Transition year.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm really encouraged, so. And the fact that we can have some level of consistent system and tools across all three, I think will be beneficial to the board. So we don't have board meetings the week of spring break. I know I have a couple of days of meetings the first couple of days. So at this juncture, I'm planning on being out myself Thursday and Friday. So thank you all for continuing to role model, being on vacation. And yes, I have internalized Commissioner Trese your business trip as well following that. So it's gonna be like Shazam after March 18th, you know? See you in April.
Yeah.
May the tulips bloom, or maybe they don't bloom until May, but it's pretty impressive how, how time goes by so quickly. Back to, so, sorry, page-wise, I'm going back to April. I wanna highlight that on April 1st, our, our work session will start only for 30 minutes. The top reference needs to be changed because we're going to be starting the Housing Authority meeting at 9:30. So we'll have a quick check-in on the formal agenda item. We'll, with, if all things look clear there, we'll be able to do the Housing Authority Committee applicants. And then after that, go right, great, by 9:20, give staff the time they need to switch over to the Housing Authority meeting. So. So then in early April, Commissioner Willie and I are going to the NACWA Water Fly-In in DC. So Vice Chair Treese will be chairing that meeting. So I'm sorry, I'll, I'll miss some of the topics there. So I'll just have to catch up with the video. And that means just three of you will be here for the joint meeting of, with the Fair Board. So let's see, April's, April's gonna go by in a flash. Because we have, well, March too, because we have those additional budget meetings in March. And the CWS budget will drop. Where's my cheat sheet? Here we go, on the 18th. So we'll have that. And what I'm internalizing, excuse me, is given the intense work that Ms. Angie and her staff are doing, as I've looked at the calendar for myself, that first weekend, I usually spend at least one day of that weekend reading the CWS budget. And then Grace, as usual, my staff assistant, helps me take time that first work week to read the CWS budget before the Washington County budget hits on April 28th. Well, what I'm realizing is, given what Ms. Angie has already briefed us on, I'm probably not gonna have the opportunity to, to juggle both, reading both of those budgets at the same time, the week of the 28th and the week of May 5th, leading up to the CWS budget meeting on the 9th. So for myself, I, I'm gonna need to dedicate more of my time the week of April 21st on the CWS budget, so that I can, I don't know, I'm just talking about myself, so that I can absorb all of the thoughtful problem-solving that the Washington County proposed budget has. So this is just a learning that I've had this week compared to where we've been at in prior years. So I just wanted to take the time to share that with all of you. And the, the advocacy meetings are coming fast and seriously now. And I'm just letting folks know that, you know, values-wise, I don't wanna see that's, that they're anticipating, but the fact of the matter is that there is a $20 million gap. And we are going to have to reduce service levels and possibly workforce. So those are just the hard decisions. As we all know, our Budget Officer, Ms. Angie, is required to deliver a balanced budget to us. And we have to both approve with the Budget Committee a balanced budget and adopt a balanced budget, all in support of the financial fiscal policies that we have to adopt to make sure that we have proper reserves and contingencies and stability year over year over year, which means one-time funds do not support ongoing operations. So I, you know, hats off to staff all these years that we've been on this journey of discovery about the true state of affairs on our software infrastructure, our hard infrastructure-like buildings. We've done a terrific job working with our staff to find the resources and apply them to get things back into state of decent repair. But we have more advancements that we need to make. And we are really blessed to have the staff that we have to do this work of advancing the stability of Washington County as a county government and a service provider, while also delivering valued services to our residency and our businesses each and every day. So that's why I think we're just going to be really, we're going to need to be really focused from April 28th through the, that budget adoption, which I had in my mind as the end of May, and I caught my mistake. If my cheat sheet notes are correct, that we'll be adopting the budget with the Budget Committee by April 20th. So I'll be verifying that. What did I say, March again? April, thank you, see?
I was like, uh-oh, I just lost my understanding.
I do this with months all the time. Thank you for catching, May 20th. And it's like, whoa, okay. Get with it, Catherine, so, you know, but there are some preparatory things along the way. For example, on, if we look at the rolling agenda, April 15th, the Capital Improvement Plan update. And we know that our great facilities and Parks Director Laurel Smith-Brown. I was trying to not say Laurel Porter, right? The TV reporter. She came to us with, we had the Preliminary Facility Condition Index, then we had the, the Comprehensive, and so this is a really come-to-it moment to fold that information into our five-year capital improvement plan. So onward, how we go. On the Animal Shelter Replacement, we haven't had Phase One come to us, so how is Phase Two coming to us?
We have the first presentation.
Was it last week and I missed it?
No.
No, it was a couple months ago.
Yes, but then we had one that was titled Phase One, and it was pulled from the agenda.
Oh, that, we just haven't renamed that, so that should.
That's why I wanted.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, that's what I was responding to, so now we're all on the same page, thanks. So, yeah, we've got, we've got some big business items in April on top of budget, so our brains will be stretched. My brain will be stretched, I won't speak for your brain, I know mine will be stretched, so. And I'm finding, my brain had a really good vacation because I've made mistakes every single day this week. And I'm not talking just about months. So then we go into May, and it's still a hopping month of May. Staffs done a really good job to try to lighten our load on our Tuesdays, but there is still some work that has to get done. So May 6th has a bunch of things, but they've done a really great job of keeping the 13th and the 20th super light for us so that we can get to what we need to do to approve a budget. So I am grateful for that, thank you very much.
Just one detail to note, in May, right now on your rolling agenda, we hold for May 6th and 27th. They're both titled Levy Polling Results Number Two.
Yeah.
After your Tuesday work session, we'll firm up the timeline after we get direction from your board, but we're holding both those dates right now, so more to come on.
The referral date can't change, so.
Yeah, so more to come on Tuesday, but just wanna highlight.
Yeah, I see both the 6th and the 27th, okay. I haven't lifted June, I'm not ready to accept that the month of June is like upon us already, but there it is. Yep, you can see June 3rd, we've got the referrals for our two levies, so that's the deadline we're rubbing up against because we have to get that referral done in order to be successful with the external campaign that's needed to support those, so. That's all I had on rolling agenda. Any thoughts, questions, any other needs?
This is the, I, I guess I'm just like confused looking at May, and I did not whip the calendar out separately, but this says Monday, May 27th, which is the holiday.
Yeah, that's, it's just listing that that's the holiday. The Tuesday stuff is the, the holiday is Monday, the 26th.
Okay, there we go. I was like, what am I missing here? I, I almost whipped the calendar out to try to figure it out, but I.
And the other thing that I'm still trying to make sure I don't forget is June 19th is Juneteenth, which is another holiday day. And so I'm on vacation. So my month of June only has at most 10, 11, 13 business dates. Thank you, Vice Chair Treese. So, okay. Anything else? Nope, well, why don't we dive into budget? Need to take a quick bio break. I'll be back in five minutes, okay? Whatever you guys wanna do. Why don't we get ready for the budget planning discussion? So Tanya, if you wanna give us background?
I, I have no materials prepared for today. The Chair wanted, the Chair wanted to have this time just set aside for your board to talk as, as a group, if you had questions or any information needs at this point, or what's, what's top of mind.
Go ahead, Dece.
I was just gonna say, do you wanna, I mean, I, I know the team's been doing a lot of hard work, the things are progressing. Do you have any other just broad updates you wanna provide?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna just commend departments and staff for their thoughtful work as we work through the challenging budget. So that, and what I mean by thoughtful work is workforce planning within departments, so knowing that there would need to be potential cuts, how we manage vacancies to, with an ideal state to minimize layoffs as much as possible. So I just wanna commend departments for their thoughtful work. Also, I'm confident in this budget. You'll receive more information than you have in past budgets of what are those service-level impacts to community. As I've shared before, there's, there will be impacts in this budget. And we'll be clear on what those impacts are and what we will be continuing to do. So as we look at our work, we'll be looking at, sometimes it's not stop, necessarily stopping doing something, it's changing how we address the work or how we approach the work. And so that will be coming forward. I'm not ready to share details at this because we're going through the process right now. I have joked, I have, I have joked before that we learn math by starting with addition versus subtraction because adding is much easier than subtracting. And so this is a hard exercise, but just really, I'm, I'm proud of our employees and the work that they've done to get to this point.
How many, how many days have you been in budget meetings?
I don't know, because this is the time of year I also dream of budget. And the team has joked that they're seeing me eat more sugar and drink more caffeine. So if you see that too, that just means Tanya's stress levels are much higher.
It's a lot of days.
It's a lot of days.
It's a lot of days, and I guess I wanted to ask the question to raise the fact that I think all of us are aware how much work is gone into what you've done apart. Been doing, that's right, and will keep doing. It's, it's, it's really good for us to recognize that as a work group of commissioners, but also publicly for the whole workforce. I'm wondering if, if you could help provide us both with a feeler for how things are going with staff. Let me, let me, sorry, I need to start with step one. Our One Washington County approach. I have really appreciated Ms. Angie, your collaborative leadership, working with all levels of management, but also communicating with every single employee. So that we have changed the culture from a very siloed organization to one where everyone in the workforce has had the opportunity to understand the linkages that we all have in servicing the community, but also our budget, while we have special purpose budgets, the general fund cuts across the whole portfolio, and boy, is it stretched big time. So I have two questions or requests. One is if you could comment on the, the evolution of the staff making that cultural advancement and the One Washington County approach? And then secondly, one, the reason why we have budget on our roundtable today is last roundtable, we went over budget parameters with Ms. Angie, and we had an open discussion to get on the table of what kind of capabilities does the board potentially need before we have a proposed budget? And so that's a discussion I want us to come back to. But the, under the banner of One Washington County, I wonder if you have any reflections or words of advice for us about things we might consider so that we are seen by our employees, by our community, and our community-based partners and fellow local governments in taking a One Washington County approach?
So my pulse on the organization right now is anxiety is high because we don't operate in a vacuum. And I, I mentioned this a bit when HHS was presenting to your board on Tuesday. And Commissioner Phi, for your information, that was the updates to the Aging, the Five-Year Aging Plan. And as we look at some of our programs, we are, in services, we are very reliant in some areas on federal, federal funding and/or state, federal state pass-through funding or state funding. And so uncertainty is not just occurring with the state of the Washington County budget, it's also what will happen at the state level and what changes could happen at the federal level and how that impacts. So I, I just, there, there's multiple tensions and just anxiety at this point in time. There is absolutely anxiety hearing that we, we could be experiencing layoffs as an organization. I, the board, could have made the choice to not say those words or share that information with employees, but that is where you start to break down trust in the process. And employees feedback, while there's anxiety. I've received direct emails from employees appreciation for there being the openness in the process. So both things can be true at the same time. We have, as I have shared before, to cut to the bone in many areas, and there are certain functions that we just need to continue as, as a county. And one of those is, for example, central finance. We, we have to have, I'll call it financial compliance, completing our audit. Due to the level of staffing, and I have to go back, I think it's been the last six years, we have not met our audit timelines, and we've had to have extensions on our audit. And so there's only so far you can cut in some of these areas, and that's the core infrastructure of the county. And so staff's, staff's workplates are very full. I think this next year, I will be looking to your board's leadership, and it falls on my leadership too. We have to really not be adding to the workplate and even look in some cases how, how we're doing our work and releasing some of that, some of that pressure valve. I will even share, and just in my own self-evaluation, I've tried to pride myself on work-life balance, and I don't have that right now. And so I know many of our employees are struggling with that too. One of the indicator on teams, we call it the green light, you can see when people are online. And the green light is on very often right now for staff on, on the weekends. And we have to retain staff at all levels of the organization, so we have to right-size some of this moving forward. And I say that without having all the right answers, but that, that is going to be doing less. And I can also appreciate your board's desire and direction that we don't want to be in this state of continuous cuts. I don't want to be in this state of continuous cuts either. And we are not going to fully solve that this year in, in the budget. There's just no way. We need more revenue or we have to have further policy discussions on what we're going to shrink further from the portfolio this coming year. So, I say this all with a heavy heart. We are, under your, your board's guidance within the ARPA framework, we do a funding for the county's first ever employee engagement survey at county level. Many of our departments do do department-based engagement surveys. One could ask, why would you do as you're going through these cuts? Why would you want to actually measure employee engagement? The reason is we do really need to hear from our employees as we move forward and during the challenging times. That's when you have to listen even more closely. So, I'm looking forward to that process and also I'm sure there will be things that, and realities that I don't want to hear that I'm hearing, but that's, that's what we all have to do in leadership. So, I wasn't prepared for that answer, you know, answer. So, I'm happy to answer any other follow-ups.
Tanya, not that you need a validation, but I wanted to validate one of the comments that you've made around staff being available and the green light on their computers being lit on green. I was traveling, as you know, last week and gotten some multiple calls and needed to get a hold of staff that really were the subject matter experts. And I was, to my surprise, with the time changes and everything, all the stuff that I needed were all green and I was able to get a hold of them on Teams. So, I do appreciate that and, and thank you for sharing the load of work that staff's plates are full. We're here with them on this journey and with you as well.
What I will say is we as board members have to figure out how to lighten that load. I have been very conscious, conscientious about, uh, reading the information, the briefing emails that we get from staff and internalizing that and not asking for additional Q and A time or briefing time because it only exacerbates how staffers stretch.
Thank you, Chair. I, I want to just reflect back what, part of what I just heard because some of the direction the commissions provided in the last, you know, six weeks, eight weeks on this front has been, you know, we, we want to have a long-term, we want to make the decisions to have long-term sustainable budget into the next five, three to five years is kind of the gestalt I got out of the discussion. And I heard, I heard you say, and we talked about it a little bit previously in the last couple of weeks, that you, you're trying to get like, I'm now reflecting back, so please correct me, but you're working to get us there. You've heard that, but you also don't think it's completely possible to just be there at the end of this budget cycle. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, so I think that's important for us to be hearing though.
So, I need to better understand that. And I know I'll understand it probably through the budget. Is it, it's, my, my brain is categorizing it in two different ways. One is that we're trying to make sure we're treating the workforce reasonably well so that there are appropriate transitions. The other is we only know so much about this state of affairs.
Huge impact.
Yes, and, you know, I guess to compare and contrast, we're seeing at the federal level, just pull the plug on everything. And then when we find out that, oh, no, you can't just fire people. I heard the report on the radio this morning about the USDA employees. And no, you actually have to go through a thoughtful process. So, so we're trying to go through a thoughtful process. But I'm trying to make sure that I have some level of confidence that we're making appropriate, well, we're making, I won't remove that adjective, that we're making service level cuts that we're, you won't have as big a lift next year given the unknowns of costs, healthcare, so on and so forth. Because we know there will be emerging issues for next year too.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna say yes and, I guess and to that, I would reflect back on the Public Safety and Justice White Paper.
Yeah.
So, we, in your proposed budget, your proposed budget will have service level cuts. There will not be freezes on positions that this will actually be elimination because we can't just add those positions in the next year because that just, then the next year, it's not sustainable.
Yep.
The, the white paper, so before even asking for these reductions, the white paper highlights we are not keeping up with the current pressures on the system. So, in this cuts budget, we are just furthering, we're not keeping up with the system. So, I think that both things can be true. And we have to pass a balanced budget each year. And we have some areas of the county that, and we will try to highlight this within, um, presentations, but I'll use like the law library. That is special fund, state-funded. They are a small but mighty team. And, um, we will have to look at service reductions there. Our behavioral health, we are relying on state funding. We're also using fund balance within our behavioral health division. So, there's going to be continuous, um, and iterations because of the braided funding we use here at the county. It's not just all property tax. It's multiple funding sources and one change in that funding, one change. It, it's like pulling the string out of a ball of yarn. Yep.
So, with all the uncertainty, you, you believe you're bringing us as,
Yep.
as sustainable of a budget as you can with what is known. There will certainly be changes to what is known and we'll have to adjust from there.
And the action of moving to the 6% per pickup for employees helps us bring wages into market. It does, it probably won't, I know it won't get us all the way. And we'll need to wait for class and comp to be completed to see where we're at, but that actually helps. So, we're retracting and we're trying to move forward at the same time.
And Lisa answered this question recently, but I have not internalized the date. I remember being surprised about when it would be complete, but I haven't internally voiced. Is it, they've made a lot of great progress. Is it the end of the fiscal year or end of calendar year?
I have to check back on the date, so I'll give you a high level. It takes about 12 to 18 months to do the full class and comp process. And we needed to complete, and I think we have under 200 left. That's of job descriptions for all employment first ever.
Completed already like 12.
Right, so that had to be the first step before we get into class and comp. But it's about 12 to 18 month process.
What I, I do, I have internalized is the pro, the program is proceeding apace. Terrific progress and we're taking, you're taking steps in this proposed budget to position us, I don't want to say well, but less behind than we used to. And we'll see further improvements through, potentially through next year's proposed budget. The proposed budget FY '27.
Yeah. And, and I don't, when I talk about how we have modernized the county over the past six years, you know, I don't always include in my mind all that work in HR. You know, I think about our capital improvement costs. I think about our software systems. I think about those things that were investments that are direct investments versus resource investments. And this has been a huge resource investment to bring us up to speed.
So, we had to, our county was broken.
Yes.
The systems for a county government.
I'm just saying, I don't always think about that particular piece of this large puzzle that we've been working toward perfecting the systems as a whole. And that's a big piece.
And I'm hoping the budget message, the summary document will be able to tell that story too. It's much like the phrase I think you used last year that I found really helpful that I find myself falling back on or using again this year is it's a tale of two counties. We have to keep investing, making certain investments in our people, in our, our means of delivering service, in our facilities, while at the same time, we have to embrace making service cuts. Potentially, you know, giving service delivery in certain areas back to the state. I'm going through the thought process of accepting that direction of going from gold standard to bronze standard. Well, you know, we've, the only clear example I have in my brain right now is that I've been really proud of our public health team. They're a leading team in the state. Well, we're maybe not going to be able to provide as much leadership with public health modernization in the state because we don't have the resource capability to do that. You know, this, the phrase that I learned early in my adult professional career was some things worth doing or not worth doing well. You just have to accept doing it satisfactorily. And that, that is a hard mind shift, but we're gonna have to be really selective.
Thank you for lifting just the gold to bronze, that phrase. As we've been talking with employees, it resonates differently to different people. And so, I just want to unpack that a bit. We may, going from gold to bronze means that we may have to reduce the service level, meaning we may be open for five days of a service versus six days. It may be, um, I, we are actually going to say instead of performing X number of inspections, we're going to choose to do Y or longer wait time. So, it depends on the service area, what that means. And then also, we do have the overlay of what we're required to do, mandated to do. And that just may, may mean that we do less of something. So, I think it, that gold to bronze, it can be from an employee standpoint. We've had to just unpack that. So, we will, when we're talking to employees, just be evolving that language. And that's where I do appreciate just our county leadership team for their continued feedback. What are they hearing from employees and also just employee feedback that I, as well as the ACAs, I'm here. Because different messages resonate differently with people.
And so, another example I've been thinking about is there are certain things that because of the state of the urban unincorporated areas, Metro expects us to do certain planning and certain timelines, sometimes directed by state deadlines. And we may not be able to reach those deadlines. We're just gonna have to ask for extensions because we may not have the resources to do it. So, there are different ways to meet state mandates. And the one variable I think we're gonna have to lean into is the variable of time for certain things. So, um, so that was, oh, and as, as we were going through this conversation about different areas of our portfolio, I was reminded of the analogy of the human body. You know, you, you can't be alive without a heart. But I've learned from personal experience, I don't have a gallbladder anymore. So, in some ways, we have redundant body parts. You know, your body functions better with it than without it, but you can still be alive. And so, I, I find myself trying to find more analogies to use to understand what some of the strategic scalpel work is all about. It's okay, you can laugh at my analogy.
I'm just worried about what goes next.
I'll offer one other thought about the, the gold to bronze concept. And, and that is just one of the things that helps me think sometimes about these things is, you know, if you think of something, whatever the activity is, being done well, fast and cheap, you can usually have two of the three of those all the time. You can never have all three of them. And so, when we're talking about going from gold to bronze, one of those three is most likely sort of getting impacted. I don't know if that's helpful to people to think about, but that's, I think, also a good way to think about when we're communicating that, like, we may be, to your point, it may just be the fast part that's no longer happening. In some cases, maybe we're gonna do a less high-quality job too. I mean, that, or, or instead, like, that may be, that may be the result and that may just be good enough. And I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where conversations help with this and especially with employees too. Because we have a lot of different service lines here at the county. So, having that one-on-one and our employees are passionate about what they do. And so, they are thinking through the lens, the impact that their job has on union. I want to just highlight Courtney, Courtney and the county council team, they see their job live out in the services delivered within the community, even though they're in internal service. They are the conduit to that service delivery and I hear you talk about that quite often. And so, finance, they, their role is that conduit of service delivery. And so, having these kind of conversations with employees, managers, having conversations with them, their employee, that's how we do start to unpack that a bit, Jason, and you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I think about areas where, over the course of the time that we've been here, that we had concerns about, I think about the permitting processes and how, how much work has gone into lowering the timeframe around permitting. And I just wanted, I, I'm reflecting on how I need to be compassionate about the work that's done to get to, maybe they're at a silver level, I don't know. But it's one of those things where we have, I believe I have to own what I've asked for in the past and that that's not gonna, that, that doesn't, that doesn't work in today's budget. So, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up too, that
Yeah.
there's been enough time here now that, you know, we, we fixed a lot of things and we're at a service level now that can we, can we sustain?
Well, that's an example too, though, where the customers were, I think, on some level, willing to pay more for faster service. And that, I mean, that, that's how.
Part of it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, but that's part, I mean, those are the, those are the trade-offs you have to make.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for sharing that interesting section. Appreciate it. Which is the second part of the, of my question towards Ms. Angie, but it's also one that we need to be mindful of as well. And I'm, I'm hoping we'll talk a, a little bit about it today or have a discussion about it. So, here we are in March. We had our February roundtable where we talked about, we each had the opportunity to say, well, here are some areas of, topical areas of the budget that I'm hoping the proposed budget documents will bring forward for me. We each own the list, okay? And it's incumbent And it's incumbent upon us to take that list and go do the looking as opposed to turning to staff and say, okay, so how did you give me this information? Okay. So that's, that's on our individual plates as we go and read the proposed budget and listen carefully to the presentations. I thought our ACAs did a marvelous job in the presentations to the budget committee last year. I was very impressed with the level of questions from our budget committee members. And it really was a learning exercise. We have a meeting coming up with them on the budget context. And in advance of that, I think we each need to be thinking about how we've been on the journey and share with them the kind of thought exercises we've gone through. And what did it mean for us to provide the budget principles and the priorities? So that, so that we've done our part to bring them on that journey too. But the other thing, it was more back to the second part of the question to Ms. Angie. We can't afford to go through the budget process as by the individual commissioners. Our community sees us as the board of commissioners. So we're going to need to up our game in a challenging budget environment to act like one Washington county. Do I know necessarily what that means? No, but I know what the need is and what the objective is. I don't necessarily know what tactics that means, but I can give you one example. I was asked by the Latino Policy Council, no, the Latino Network to meet with them. As we know, they have a contract with the county for juvenile justice and peer mentoring and guidance, and they do a great job. Well, they're one of multiple CBOs under contract with us that is understanding on this journey of, we've got a $20 million gap in our general fund that will be solved with our proposed budget. And that we need to, to continue to follow through on, I should say estimated gap with the budget adoption. And so I replied, you know, I'm always happy to meet with folks. But I also stepped further than I ordinarily stepped forward on in terms of prudence. And saying, look, you know, we know they're going to be, need to be cuts. And they're going to be wicked hard cuts. I'm, I'm summarizing here, I didn't actually type the word wicked. And no, you know, personally as one of five, investing in our youth is cutting investing in our youth early in life isn't, isn't a cut my heart wants to make. But it may be a choice my brain has to make. And so just being upfront with folks, making sure I'm not pandering in any way, shape or form. Which I tend to be pretty cut and dry and so forth. But we have to recognize where things are at and, and act accordingly. I don't know. I've, I haven't been on a journey like this. We've had the, the gaps of the last few years because we have surfaced the unmet needs, right? The fact that buildings, you know, the infrastructure systems, class and comp was out of date. So we were behind market and people weren't being paid appropriately. I mean, yeah, that's what we've been through the last four years. Okay. Now we have a different sort of structural change needed. And so this one is going to be painful in a different way. And I just, I've not been through this level of, of sustained years of difficulty and change at any time in my career, right? All these years in a row. The state of affairs has actually improved since the three of us started in January 19. But the, the budget needs to accommodate that level of transparent need that we have is still a challenging one. So I don't know what the tactics may be because this is so new. And I don't know if any of you, based upon your experience and reflections, have anything you might offer me at least, or us as a group towards that end.
With those kinds of requests, I, you know, try to listen and be compassionate, but also not promise things that, you know, I, I think that's where sometimes in elected roles, people can, you know, set expectations that are either something you can't deliver on or may not be realistic. And I really try to avoid that. And I think doing, doing that by listening, not promising anything, but also describing overall, the bigger picture context in which all these decisions are being made, which is what you've just, I think is usually my approach. I don't know that it works every time or is perfect, but it is what I try to do to cope and manage with that.
Well, I look forward to our 5-0 vote to adopt the budget.
I think we need to do that this year. We need to have the tough conversations and get to that. Send a clear message.
Yep. So I've pretty much exhausted all my thoughts.
The budget committee.
I think we're talking about the board.
Yeah, the board adoption. You're talking about approval.
Yeah, the budget committee.
It is, yeah, they're different parts. Yeah.
No, but that was because a member that wasn't engaged. Well, I'm sorry, we're talking, we're, we're reflecting on the, the recommendation that came from the budget committee was not a unanimous recommendation, but there was circumstances around that that were, I, I guess I'll use the term unique. So.
Any further words of wisdom?
No, I, I think, I think our, our level of sensitivity has to be high. We have to be thinking about these things, but we have to stay focused on what we have to deliver, which is that balanced budget. And that's, that's going to be the hard part.
Well, I'm looking forward to your chocolate chip cookies.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
And I think I'll have to be falling back on some of my comfort foods like mac and cheese here and there. Okay, well, without further ado then, I wanted to come back to board of commissioners organizing. And in the packet, you have an updated focus list chart. And so I'd like to walk through it. Do you all have it? So the categories are, what I tried to do was use the color yellow to highlight changes, but I'll step through. I stuck with the same time period, okay? So the time period did not change. The red line is we are here in the year 2025. Okay. And then I wanted to distinguish 2025 from 2026. As you all know, I'm not running for reelection in May of 26, but I am mindful of all the foundational work we're doing and that there are certain problems that we've been living through or challenges we've been living through and problem solving programs that we have that will continue. And hence why this goes out into the 2030s, which is only five years away. Shazam. So I added the, with a typo, I better get my red pen out. So I correct this. It should not be state keg. There is no beer keg involved. It's state ledge engagement. I put that row back in.
I was sure there was a new program.
Sorry about that. So that's why that row is in yellow, because I put it back in. Because it involves our time, right? The board has two key assets, our time and our political capital. The CIP and the facility condition index. We had the preliminary information in May, Laurel came back in, in November. This will be the first year that that facility condition index comes and the financials of it come into the CIP for FY26. So the, and what I did was I added for the future years out, recognizing that facility conditions, right? The portfolio continues to evolve through that new CIP. And why I think that's important is we've done the work organizationally to, to have a comprehensive CIP, but now we have to set up our processes of using those. So it's, our staff's doing the great work, but we have to recognize that that's part of the board responsibility. So we don't allow things to slide back as we have lived through these last several years. Community service level assessment, we had that information back in August. We are advancing, you've seen it through the rolling agenda, further service level work. And, but we're really feeling it through our, our budget, right? That's where the push comes to shove. You can adopt all the policies you want, but if you don't put the implementation of policies into practice, example through your budget, then you're just wasting everybody's time. I'm not into performative policies. You already know that about me. Okay, next row, the CCICPO. This is in yellow because the timeline has been updated for clarity. So that's why that's in yellow. The libraries, this is just added clarity, the process hasn't changed. But I wanted to make sure that we were clear in how, oh, I know, I had the levy. I don't have the old version with me. But what I wanted to make sure is between the library cooperative work that's going on with governance and finance and the levy process, that we were clear in terms of going through this program of, of improvement. Then the IG, and then the levy is being put together using that. And then the IGA's are updated and then the timeframe for the levy. So is it clear that?
Yeah. And I think what's important here, yeah, from my perspective and Jerry to ask you, is that we've got the levy going on, but we also have a lot of governance work within that structure.
Yeah.
That there's been work on.
Yeah.
And some changes to collections, that type of thing. But also the ultimate work is going to be around the IGA with the cities and what the, what the budget looks like for city participation in library structure. So that, that line that isn't the levy is an important line too.
Yep, yep, yep. All those connection points and the leveraging points. Thank you. The next line on behavioral health capacity and CAT openings.
Skip the PS and J.
Yeah, because so far nothing's changed.
Oh, okay.
Except way out there, you'll see longer till, and I'll be coming back to that.
Okay.
But we do have the opening of our two recovery facilities, the Hillsborough and the Beaverton locations going from the end of 2025 into 2026. That's where the federal uncertainty around Medicaid or concerns me a little bit because we've really leaned into making sure we have facilities. But you know, the, the operations have to be funded. So we'll see. Public safety levy, that's all the same. Now we're getting into the part that's changed. And I have a sneeze that wants to just come out. Oh, very tickly nose. Okay, so the first row is the path we've been on, okay? And this is where we were hoping we could be, I said aggressive, Aaron said assertive. And we have more work to do. And so I met with Aaron and Anne back in October, Ms. Angie was on the road and sketched out from my level of understanding where things are at. I think there's more work around, I'm on the road that says alternative to added new facility type and use planning phase. And so really leveraging the work that has been going on with the consultant on phase one, recognizing that, you know, you can't squeeze blood out of a rock. We have to, we're just going to have to do the work and it's going to take time to do the work. So I'm being the tip of the spear, recognizing that, yep, we still got to do the phase two work. Our facilities team is great. They know how to hire the right people, plan things out and get it built. There's going to be all that financing that needs to be sorted out. And then I recognized, okay, somebody's going to have to develop a new plan with regard to construction because I'm way out on my skis here in 2027. So what it means to me is going back to the row that says PS and J persistent problems. I'm recognizing that a new jail won't be ready that second half of calendar year 30, that it's potentially, those problems could go longer still. Which certainly isn't something I want. So, but when we're talking about a major facility, major county wide facility at that, we have to go through the work. So.
The alternative is really the realistic right now, what it, based on what's known, that's the realistic timeline. And essentially the planning phases begins maybe 18 months later than originally planned.
No, some of, the phase one planning is underway.
Right.
Yep. But we're finding But we're finding that it needs a little bit more time. And the phase two facility RFP prep work.
Right.
Is still going to need to be done, but there's more work to really look at. You know, if you're going to build a facility for twenty five to thirty years, you want to build the right facility. So what, how do we ensure that that program has. The time to figure out what kind of facility? So, hey, it may get better. It may get better once. There, the results of phase one are really internalized. So, but right now we just have to recognize that it's going to take a little bit longer. And our staff will be coming back to us. It may not be until after the budget. But the, the program team's going to figure it out. But it's not what I had hoped for previously. But I also understand, you know, with all the uncertainty we've had and the reality. That something's got to give. And the give has to be the time.
But we want to do it right.
Yep. We want to do it right, but we also want to do it.
Yes.
Yes, we're committed to do it.
It, it's, to me, this is kind of like looking at the CPI. You know, it's anticipating what your needs are and being prepared to address the needs in a timely fashion. So, you know, I, does it? Can it move? Yes, but it can't go away.
Yep.
That's my view.
So I think we're going to come back to, to the topic after budget. And, you know, like I said, I sketched this out in October and went over it with two ACAs. But guess what? My viewpoint in terms of. What's able to be achieved in the first half? It has totally changed. Yeah, so we haven't been able to talk about the facility type and use yet. And that's okay. That is okay. So this, I don't want anybody to be fooled. This is not establishing a new plan of record as you occasionally hear me talk about. That's why it's still, I'm still saying alternative. Okay? No thumbs up with me, Erin and Ann? We'll come back to it. Okay. So another item. That has changed since we worked on this last. Was AOC is putting, put together a new courthouse task force. So in addition to our continuing to work at the legislature to try and get the planning money. Yep, we're still engaged there, which. We got dinged for not participating in the twenty sixteen effort. Which according to Phil Lemon, the deputy administrator of OJD. Counties are not supposed to get dinged for nonparticipation because they don't have the local match. Okay?
They should still be moving through the process.
Yep, well, that was not our experience. Right? Which is why we get delayed how many years? Over four? So we did secure the local match. We've had that secured for a couple of years. And this is where we're turning up the heat on the state legislature. One particular reason why I am staying engaged at AOC on this is to protect. Our place in line when it comes to construction. There were some folks that, some counties that got, had a, we participated previously. And then this latest process, other counties came in ahead of us in the planning. So I'm carrying that experience forward with me. And if we don't get planning money out of this legislature, hmm. I'm really going to wonder, what are these AOC dues doing for us? So you heard it here yet again. Another use of the word new. As we had the opportunity to learn of from a memo, from a memo from our staff in January. They've added a new program to our plate. That involves, potentially involves political capital. And I lifted out of that. Memo, that January memo, the phases that enumerate us here. I haven't double checked the rolling agenda to see if that phase three is actually happening or not. Let alone phase four. So once again, that's where the element of time comes in. And it's not just staff time. This is where we weigh in. Uh-uh, no staff. You don't get to define a POR for our. Time and political capital expenditure. So the other new thing is I've recognized that we have multiple ordinances. We had the experience in twenty twenty four where we had at least one land use ordinance. That involved some political capital. Well, guess what? Looking ahead just for this year, I see at least two. That may involve some political capital. And that is the work for climate friendly and equitable communities, as well as the housing production strategy. So that's why it's like, wait a second. We have a well of political capital too, and it has limits. So that's why it's back on as a focus list. ERP process is totally the same. The metro SHS reform stuff, we're on it, but it's added. Primarily because thankfully you all are very patient with the fact that this topic keeps coming back to our work sessions and exec sessions. Why? Because I refuse to use the position of chair to make decisions on your behalf. I make sure this is a board decision.
Thank you.
And I know it tests our patience. Absolutely it does. Emerging issues. Luckily, it's blank at the moment, but. For example. Washington County Museum, Five Oaks. We're all spending time on it whether we like it or not. So that's an, an emerging issue. So that's why I added the row. Because like it or not, year over year over year. There is something that drains our time and political capital. So. I had previously had a really short list of changes from version to version. But I thought it might help you if I continued to have a laundry list of what changed. So it's on the beach. So that's my summary. I'm assuming, once again, you've given me feedback before that these tools have been helpful.
They're great for long range planning. Seeing the phasing of things.
Any thoughts, questions? Don't make us do this again. Or please use prettier colors or.
We can't afford not to look. You know, so this is, this is our responsibility to look into the future for. What's here and what's, what's needed. And, you know, when I think of things like courthouse, I think. The magnitude of a project like that or it's just, and given where we are staff wise and all those things. It just makes, makes me anxious. But I, it's, we have to, we have to figure out how does it fit in? How do we, you know, how do we adjust and meet the needs of our, frankly, of our community? That's what we're doing here. It's meeting the needs of our, our communities.
And being transparent about it. Yep. Yep. This is the job that we do as commissioners. Okay. I thought that might take a little more time. But it hasn't. Any other thoughts? Yee-haw, great. Well.
What's most important is you don't hear disagreements. You know, that's, that's.
Well, other than state keg versus state ledge.
Oh, I disagree with that.
Are there, did I forget things? Do you know?
Very exhaustive.
Well, I will correct the state keg to state ledge. So if you find any other granular mistakes.
Yes, he had to find the keg.
Oh, okay. No worries.
He had it, he had it right over here on the right hand side over here.
Yeah.
It was over on the left side. Yep, yep.
Only takes one keg to have a party. Right? Okay, well, so before we problem solve around exec session, were there any board updates that you wanted to share? That can't wait till next Tuesday? Nope. Okay. Alrighty then, is staff prepared to start the exec session early?
I think so. I sent a chat.
Okay, well then why don't we take a fifteen minute break to give everybody time to adjust? And let's, can we assume that we can start at ten forty? Okay, so I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero. Sub two, sub H for the purposes of discussion circumstances around potential litigation.
So I'm off.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. You're going to take a fifteen minute break and reconvene an exec session at ten forty by that clock.